I'd like to call to order the Middletown City Council meeting for Tuesday, May 5th, 2020. We're conducting this via Zoom because in response to the COVID-19 pandemic and the recently signed Ohio House Bill 197, temporarily amending the public meetings law. As you can tell, the meeting agenda is posted already on our site and we're going to conduct the meeting as normal, in normal order, and we're streaming it live on Facebook and afterwards it's also going to be put up on YouTube as well. So if we can start with meditation, moment of silence and a pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Okay, Ms. Skank, will you please call the roll for us?
Mr. Moon?
Here.
Mr. Mulligan?
Here.
Mayor Condor?
Here.
Ms. Nanny?
Here.
Ms. Vettori?
Here.
She is here.
Okay, for citizen comments, Ms. Skank, did we have any of those submitted today?
We did. We had four citizens' comments and I will read them in the order that they were received. First comment is from Cheryl and Larry Compton. The request is that the following comments be read to the city council during the public comments. I'm requesting, I'm sorry, it's the same thing again. My husband and I moved to Middletown, Ohio about four years ago so that he could be a full-time professional skydiver with Team Fast Tracks. He is also now the chief tandem instructor and an AFF instructor with Start. We lived in Middletown for about two years and have now bought a house in Trenton, Ohio, but still do most of our shopping and entertainment and socializing in Middletown, Ohio. I don't understand why a city is trying so hard to run a business out that is so good for Middletown and that loves Middletown like Start Skydiving does. You have been given the facts as to how much money Start Skydiving brings in every year by skydivers and their families and friends coming in and spending money on hotels, restaurants, gas, food, et cetera. Just to name one way it brings revenue into the city. Start Skydiving has many different groups around Middletown that they do demos for, such as Baraka Church, Little Cross Invitational, many events at Smith Park, and many usually high school football teams and little league teams, along with military events around the area. Both Start and Team Fast Tracks help advertise Middletown, Ohio from the state, country, and world. Why would you work so hard to run off something that is a sure thing? That you can see the money and goodwill brought to the city by this business for something that might happen? The facts have been stated as to why corporate jets would not work at Hookfield, yet you blindly look past the facts. Stop looking at such a narrow window and see the whole picture and the town you're supposed to be taking care of. Also, Start Skydiving does not need to move to the other side of the airport where access isn't as quick if there's an emergency and where it's more dangerous for skydivers and all involved. The separation of the levels in skydiving is one of the safest things about Start Skydiving and one of the things I appreciate as the most B-licensed skydiver. You've been given the facts over and over about the safety record at Start Skydiving. By even thinking about making the move across the airport is asking to remove the best safety feature there is, in my opinion. The owners at Start just want you to honor the contract you already are in and they are great, good-hearted, wonderful people. Let Start Skydiving continue to grow where it is and continue to be a huge asset for Middletown, Ohio. Start Skydiving would be encouraged to grow, should be encouraged to grow right here where it is for the benefit of the whole town. So that's Cheryl and Larry Compton's. The second one comes from Tim Sayer. His comments are, "Good morning. I am a skydiver who comes to Start Skydiving on occasion to jump. It is a fantastic place to jump. The staff are courteous and friendly. The airplanes and equipment are well-maintained and safe, and the landing area is huge and obstacle-free. This is the main reason I drive three hours one way just to jump. My DZ in West Virginia is small, so the drop in West Virginia is small, and has obstacles with fewer outs, places you can use when you can't make it to the landing area. I, along with other jumpers from West Virginia and other areas, travel to Start so we can practice things on our canopies that we cannot at our drop zone, as well as jumping larger aircraft with more people. Moving the landing zone, I'm sorry, moving the landing area to any of the proposed location would greatly hinder that. I have reviewed the NTSB Incident Reports Government 2020, along with the ASRS Database Government 2020, and found that there were six incidents from 1985, including the ones from the report Susan Cohen 2020 I'm responding to. The airport in Middletown does not have a tower. There are no restrictions to crossing runways on airports with no towers other than to not get hit." This nullifies one of the incidents. One was due to aircraft communication handovers from one air traffic controller to the other. One referred to jumpers in the air under canopy close to aircraft. Aeronautical charts include a symbol for planes where skydiving takes place, along with a radio channel used. There was one fatality which involved someone walking into the prop of an unfamiliar aircraft. She was accustomed to an aircraft with one prop and this one had two. None of these incidents would have been prevented by moving the location of the drop zone. While the proposed locations all have circles measured with respect to the corresponding levels of experience, one thing they failed to mention is that each circle is for one jumper and that a load may contain 20 or more jumpers and they will not all be vying for the same circle and they will all be vying for the same circles at the same time. One does not need a degree in physics to see what happens in this case. The other thing not mentioned is a proposal that each new location proposed is on the perimeter of the airport next to an obstacle. It is not unusual for a bad spot, a wind direction change, or another unforeseen event to create a bad spot and leave jumpers struggling to reach the landing area. In a case like this, with a landing area where it is, there are outs where jumper can safely land in each of these areas where the new landing areas are proposed. If they were located in any of the new locations, they will present a significant hazard when attempting to be reached from at least one area. Since Start Skydiving has a robust training program for new jumpers and also a tandem facility that caters to non-skydivers as passengers, adding any increase to the already significant challenges to a safe skydive just for the convenience of aircraft is not in the spirit of the FAA regulation quoted on the first page of the agenda, Susan Cohen 2020. Comment number three comes from John Hart II. My name is John P. Hart II and my mailing address is 1937 Wilbraham Road, Middletown, Ohio. I have numerous areas to address regarding information contained in the recommendation to city council document, "Skydiving Drop Zone Location," submitted by the City of Middletown Airport Commission. This report contains an email listed as Exhibit 2. The email is dated September 16th, 2019, 9:46 a.m. and is from Paul Lawley, Chief, City of Middletown Division of Fire. The email was addressed to Shelby Quinn Levin and CC to Doug Atkins, Matt Eisenbrowne, Rodney Metersfall, and Dan Ditton. The subject line reads, "Skydiving Incident." The email is being referenced from Appendix 2, Page 25 of 200, within the May 5th, 2020 City Council Workbook. Start Skydiving puts safety first in everything we do. We have comprehensive protocols in place for virtually every conceivable life-threatening emergency and strictly adhere to them. We are one of the few skydiving centers in the United States that have a first-response trauma team made up of qualified volunteers that have access to a well-equipped emergency response room at our facility. The second paragraph of Chief Lawley's email reads verbatim, and I quote, "Matt and Dan, there was an issue with skydivers in the air as care flight was arriving and trying to land. They were delayed landing a bit while they circled the area, assuring all skydivers were on the ground. I was told that the jump occurred after the shift commander advised Start Skydiving to cease jumps. Not trying to make a big deal out of this because I still don't have all the facts, but maybe something we need to address. I'll get back to you. Any questions, let me know," end quote. Start Skydiving maintains comprehensive records of every incident that requires medical transport. Had Matt Eisenbrowne or Dan Ditton followed up with me about the September 15th incident, they would be reporting that our actions helped save this injured skydiver's life and you would be giving my daughter Lisa Hart a certificate of appreciation instead of using this email to promote a version of reckless operation by Start Skydiving. Chief Lawley also says, "I still don't have all the facts, but maybe something we need to address." How can this be part of a recommendation when the incident was never addressed with Start Skydiving? Under oath, I will swear that Start Skydiving did not allow any skydivers to exit any aircraft after the shift commander from the Middletown Fire Department advised Start Skydiving to cease jumps. I am emailing each member of council the documented contained in our 9/15/19 incident report of what occurred. I ask that the email from Chief Lawley not be used as Matt Eisenbrowne and Dan Ditton are intending to be used as an indication of reckless behavior and that the record reflects the facts." And I have one last citizen's comment. This is from John Hart III. "Council members, I wish to address the report in this meeting's agenda in the order of issues that I came across. Since my safety presentation was included in tonight's agenda, I hope each of you took the time to view and listen to it again. The first issue is that there are no such things as minimum object-free areas for parachute landing areas." The United States Parachute Association simply states various minimum radial distances that skydivers must remain from obstacles based on their experience level. These minimum distances and obstacles are stated and defined in the basic safety requirements found in the United States Parachute Association's Skydivers Information Manual. However, even these distances and obstacles may be waived by the United States Parachute Association Safety and Training Advisor, such as myself. Please note, these are minimum requirements. Drop zones are encouraged to have as much space available as possible to use as an alternative landing area in the event that a skydiver is unable to land in the intended area for whatever reason. The next lie being told to you is Table 1, USPA Parachute Drop Zone Guidelines. This table is completely made up. There are no such things as Class 1, 2, and 3 drop zones or minimum dimensional specification standards for drop zone areas defined by the United States Parachute Association. Such things do not exist and are nowhere to be found in the USPA's skydiver information material, as this report tries to claim. There isn't even a table in the Skydivers Informational Manual, like the one in the report. Clearly, this consultant has no idea what he is talking about. He's just trying to make stuff up that appears to be factual. Secondly, the FAA has guidelines and recommendations, but the FAA even states that these recommendations and guidelines are not applicable or practical at all airports. The airport's rules and procedures do not have to fall within the FAA-established guidelines, as this report tries to claim. In addition, the airport's RSA, and I don't know what RSA means, in addition, our airport's RSA and OFA depicted in the report is not accurate at all. Notice how the grass, runway, lime pond, roads, intersection, and their accompanying vehicles, poles, and wires all fall within this exaggerated area. Such things are not permitted to fall within an object-free area or runway safety area. It is also important to note that the FAA specifically makes the effort to state that a runway and taxiway safety areas and object-free areas are not prohibited areas for skydivers to land, so they are irrelevant. Planes can still take off and land when someone is in the RSA or OFA. If not, then the whole airport would need to shut down for hours every time the grass gets cut along the runway and taxiway. They are simply areas that must be graded and should be able to support an aircraft without causing damage to it if an aircraft runs off the runway or taxiway. Skydivers do not affect this in any way. A plane that's never run off a runway and struck a skydiver, that is not a thing. Moving our landing areas anywhere other than their current location will result in an increased risk of collision between an aircraft and a skydiver, as I has demonstrated and elaborated on in my safety presentation that was sent out back in February. It will also result in an increased likelihood of collisions between skydivers of various skill levels, all converging on the same area. In addition to increasing the risk of injury and death of all airport users, moving our landing area will result in undue financial hardship on our business due to the increase in costs and inefficient delays. Our planes would have to wait for our staff to come all the way back from these proposed landing areas, which will reduce the number of customers that we are able to jump on any given day, which will result in a decrease in revenue being generated in Middletown. None of this is even mentioned in the Financial Impact section of the report. We also only have one truck that can fit a maximum of 10 jumpers safely. However, these new landing areas will result in us having to drive back over 30-plus jumpers after every load. We would need to buy a bus to achieve this, which we cannot afford. If our vehicle were unavailable, all of our customers would have to walk over a mile back to our hangar on 100-plus-degree days in the middle of summer while carrying 30 to 50 pounds of equipment. This is enough to give someone a heat stroke, especially if they have to do it 20-plus times each day as our instructors do. Lastly, the hand-picked opinions of pilots and the biased nature of not listing our current landing area as an option is clearly evident. We were not asked for our opinion or expertise in the field or how it would affect our operations. None of our hundreds of skydivers were surveyed for their opinions or asked how it would affect their skydiving experience. Wouldn't you want someone to ask for your opinion when trying to determine something that directly affects the safety and success of your business? Also, the skydiving accidents that are listed in this report are completely irrelevant for landing areas and are just being used as a shameful scare tactic. Accidents can occur during any activity. Start Skydiving prides itself in being the most safety-conscious skydiving center in the world. It is an insult to suggest that our skydiving center is unsafe or that it does not take every precaution to ensure the safety of all airport users. If you are doing your due diligence as a council member, then you must go straight to the official sources, the FAA and the USPA, not some third-party consultants who are known to be used by cities to attempt to kick skydiving centers off of airports. You must also ask all of the right questions. Do our landing areas have to move at all in the first place considering they have safely existed without incident for over 10 years? Why are our landing areas suddenly being labeled as unsafe, especially since only the FAA is a finer arbiter when it comes to safety-related decisions? Why are you willing to increase the risk of an aircraft collision with a skydiver or someone having a heat stroke? Why is the city wasting tens of thousands of tax dollars on bogus airport consultants during an impending financial crisis, especially when real officials from the organizations with actual authority in the matter, the FAA and the USPA, are willing to answer your questions and provide the factual, real facts for free? I implore you to honor the least commitments that the city agreed to over 10 years ago and let Start Skydiving continue to operate safely and bring tens of thousands of visitors from all over the world every year. We love our community and are committed to serving it safely and honorably. Thank you for your time. That's all the public comments that were received.
If I may interrupt, I did receive one email that I believe was intended to be a public comment, so if I may, Your Honor, read it at this time. Madam Mayor?
Sure.
I received one email from Steve Widmer, who indicated, "I am requesting that the 200-page agenda concerning Middletown Regional Airport Drop Zone be read in its entirety as a public comment to council members at Tuesday's May 5th meeting. Thank you." Unless council would like to engage in that, it is my opinion that that is not a public comment and it is not in the three-minute time limit that council has allotted for public comments, but I did want to read the email into the record.
How does that work as far as, so I guess the whole agenda, is that part of public record? I don't know the...
Yeah.
Or, sorry, not the agenda, the workbook?
The workbook is published on our website and part of the public record.
Okay, so that suffices Mr. Widmer's request?
I would believe so.
Thank you, Ms. Skank, for reading all of those comments. I'm sure you're happy to get back to council chambers at some point so people can comment on their own. Next, we have council comments, so let's go ahead and I'll just go down on my screen. His first, Ms. Nanny, would you like to start?
First things first, unmute. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll try to keep it brief as I'm sure that we've got a lot to go through. I just want to, on behalf of the downtown businesses, extend a thank you to the Middletown Community Foundation and to DMI for their support in the way of small business grants. I know those went out this week, so I'm sure I'm among many who want to extend their thank you. I also want to say congratulations to Shelby Quinn Levin. We found out over the weekend that she gave birth to her son Wesley, so thoughts are with her in her next couple of sleepless months. We hope she gets back to us soon. And then I would also like to thank the Airport Commission, city staff, and all airport users for their input and reports. I think they give us a wide picture of the impact of our decisions moving forward. To be clear, I don't think that anyone is trying to push anyone out of the airport, but rather I believe that we, as a council, are responsible to all users of the airport equally. I have always and will always vote for what I believe is best for Middletown. I also rely on the knowledgeable staff and expert recommendations from trusted members of our commissions who, I believe, want what is best for all citizens and customers of Middletown. In this time, I think it's as important as ever that we think about things, business concepts, that I try to enact in my own business, like constant improvement and creative improvisation. And I hope that however the city proceeds, that all users of our airport will find a way to move forward safely and prosperously. And I will cede to the next council comments. Thank you.
Mr. Mulligan?
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Your Honor. I'll just add my congratulations to Shelby Quinn Levin on her giving birth to her son, and this will be a special Mother's Day for her on Sunday, for sure. And I also wish to express my thanks to so many members of the community, including the Airport Commission, for putting some good work together and we see their work product in the packet for this meeting regarding this airport decision. Thank you for that. And lastly, as we begin to open up our local and state economy, I just implore everyone to move with patience and I do feel like the tide is turning and it's encouraging to see more businesses opening up and getting back to normal and looking forward to that, to spending more time with friends and family and hopefully very soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Vettori?
Sorry, I'm technically challenged because my children closed me out of this and I had to come on my phone, so here I am. I also want to thank Shelby. Welcome to the wonderful world of motherhood. These first couple months, you'll be home and you can be safely, and that's really wonderful, so I hope she enjoys this time with her family. I'd also want to thank the Community Foundation and Downtown Middletown, Inc. They moved very quickly to try to work together and get some relief to our small businesses and I think as one of those small business owners, you know, that was a really meaningful experience. I think the dollars help, but the intentions even speak more volumes to me, how much our community cares about us. And I extend that also to the people in the community that have continued to patronize the businesses that are allowed to be opened. And I know there's a lot of debate about that, so we really hope that we can all come together and make choices for ourselves on what we feel safe and comfortable doing and patronizing and take our time to get to where we want to be, but without judgment of others. I think that's starting to creep in, unfortunately. In terms of the airport, I would probably echo my colleagues' comments. For me, I look at that, as I've said before, a wonderful asset that we have left. It's probably our largest physical asset left to develop and my intentions, as they always are, are to do what's best for the city. And I'm really thinking about five, 10, and 15 years from now, what's happening there. So, you know, my thoughts aren't about this little piece or that little piece. It's about where can we plan for a future that, at this point, is unknown, and I don't mean that in a bad way. I mean that in drone technology, and I don't think anyone can know in 10 years what kind of opportunities may be available at the airport and we need to plan now just to have a layout that will work best for the future and have everybody take their place and participate as harmoniously as we can. So I'm sure that's a little naive and optimistic, but that's how I roll. And I want to make sure everyone knows, I'm sure my colleagues as well, we've done tons of research. We've read these 200 pages. I've spent plenty of time on the various websites with the US Parachute Association, the FAA. There's so much kind of interesting relationship between those organizations. I've read and read and read. So I feel like we have been presented with a lot of information. I know people want to talk about if it's colored in one way or not. I think we're all smart enough human beings that we can read all this information and decipher for ourselves what's relevant to, again, the future of our airport. So I'm grateful for everyone's passion and, you know, like I often say, my family, you have been heard. That doesn't necessarily mean everyone's going to get exactly what they want, but I think together we will be able to create a great space for all of us to be using into the next couple of decades. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Moon?
Thank you, Your Honor. We'll make it four for four here. Congratulations, Shelby, if you're watching. Congratulations. This has changed your life forever in the most wonderful way possible. So congratulations to you and your husband. On the topic of Mother's Day, I want to wish a Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers out there. Certainly, I want to wish a Happy Mother's Day to my wife, Sarah Lynn, and my mom, Melanie. And then on the airport, I think my colleagues have said it well. I think there's plenty of space out there for us all to get along and everybody can continue to operate in the safest way possible. And I appreciate the input that everybody has provided. And that's all I have, Your Honor.
Okay, I will add mine as quickly as possible. Also, congratulations to Shelby and Happy Mother's Day to all mothers. I'm sure many of you have seen, Middletown did finally have its first and now second death related to COVID-19. So we have one 69-year-old male and one 94-year-old male, and I just want to send my condolences to their families. And I would hope that we would use, you know, their memories to push us all forward and do greater things in Middletown. My second thing, so I was going through a lot of financials for the city and ran across, and if anyone has used the OpenGov financial transparency tool on the city's website and have now found that it's been woefully incorrect. So the city apparently has managed to upload two, three, four, or five times the financials accidentally. So if anyone has looked at those numbers, I'm not sure when that started. I believe the first of the year. I just want to tell everyone right now that they're fixing that issue and so if you've looked at numbers in the past, just know that they are probably incorrect. So after January. All right, and the last thing is, I am making this push to get our commissions and to include city council to stay accountable for our meeting minutes. We are really far behind on council and I know Amy Skank is working hard to get us up to date. So you may see the next meeting, we're going to have a lot of meetings minutes to approve, but I went through the last two years and I have a list of them. And commissions, if you haven't turned your minutes in, you're wrong. You're required to do that and we need... You're required to do that, and we need to happen because otherwise, as council, we don't know what's going on. So the point of the commissions is, I don't like to waste my time in meetings where, you know, my time isn't needed. And so if you're, if we're having commission meetings, then they must be informational value and they're of value to council. And we want to hear about them, and I'm sure you're doing great things in those. So please get those to us so that we can approve those meeting minutes. And that is all of my council comments for today. So I'm going to pass the baton to Susan Cohen, our Acting City Manager, for City Manager Reports.
Thank you. Excuse me. I am going to spend most of my comments tonight discussing the airport plans that you have all been provided in your packets that have been published on our website. I hope after we talk that we'll be able to discuss if there is consensus on how council would like to advise us to move forward. But I will go ahead and start if we can get a slide, please. Okay. We are continuing our discussion from the retreat we had on February 1st of this year discussing our airport master plan layout. What you see here is our current depiction of the areas available. Slide, please. This started in 2017. Yes, it hasn't been that long that we entered into a grant agreement with the FAA in which the city agreed to update the Middletown Regional Airport Master Plan, the Airport Layout Plan. We've been working with Woolport Consulting to complete that plan. The final piece is to document the airport layout plan, all of our assets and places for the locations at the airport. The drop zones must be mapped out, and that really is the last piece we have to plug into this plan to get it completed three years later. Slide, please. After our discussion in February, I took to heart, I believe, all the questions that council asked and tried to find answers for those. Staff has been working since that time to reach out to different entities to provide you as much information as we had available to us. In making this list, we worked with Woolport, we worked with Quadrex Consulting, who does airport safety layout plans and safety analysis. We reached out to our airport commission members, whose job it is to advise council about airport-related matters. Had some good discussions with airport manager Dikton and asked him to provide some written documentation for you and worked with airport users, including commission members, airport stakeholders, as well as start skydiving as an entity with interest in this. I did actually leave on this list, we did have some discussions with the City Public Works Department about some of the cost information you're going to get into here in a little bit. Slide, please. The airport layout plan must be updated. My goal in this and my understanding from council, as I took over the Acting City Manager job, is that the mandate has been to find the way to use the airport as a driver in economic development and make it the full use of the asset for the city. This includes appropriating space at the airport for all activities that are appropriate and in the safest manner possible. I want to make clear there is no goal to get skydiving out of the airport. It is just to make sure that we are using the asset fully for all of our resources that are available. I want to talk a little bit before we get too started about what we know as the standards for parachute landing and drop zones. The FAA works with U.S. Parachuting Association, and they issue basic safety requirements to determine some basics in setting up a safe drop zone. Slide, please. U.S. Parachuting Association basic safety requirements indicate areas used for skydiving should be unobstructed with the following minimal radial distances from the nearest hazard. I won't read these to you, but it involves the experience level of the jumper and how far they should be from any hazards. Slide, please. Hazards are defined in the basic safety requirements as telephone, power lines, towers, buildings, open bodies of water, highways, vehicles, and clusters of trees covering more than 32,292 square feet. That also indicates manned ground air communication radios, panels, smoke lights are to be present on the drop zone during skydiving operations. With this, the FAA does not provide a direct guideline that says, hey, the drop zones must be here, but they do provide some documents that are demonstrative in this matter. Slide. I want to look first at FAA Circular 105 to E. This was cited in some of the materials in part, but I want to take a look at it in the whole. Indicates first, airports may designate suitable parachute landing areas. I take this to interpret that we, as the city and the airport manager, have the ability to set the suitable parachute landing areas. While skydivers attempt to land in such areas, at times there may be inadvertent landings in other grass or hard surfaces. This could include landings on runways, taxiways, and other hard-surfaced areas. Areas such as runways, taxiways, clearways, and obstacle-free zones are not prohibited areas, but should not be designated as a primary landing area and should be vacated as soon as practical. Flying a parachute over runways at low altitude should be avoided where possible. FAA recommends that airport management work with parachute operations to develop a standard operating procedure for activities conducted by parachutists. Airports that receive or have received federal funding or grant assurances may have additional requirements or restrictions to parachute landing areas. I take the highlighted sentences important here that we, as airport sponsors, can set up a suitable parachute landing area and that while the runways, taxiways, clearways, and obstacle-free zones are not prohibited, they should be avoided if there are other practical locations. So the idea is that we have to look at the airport and see if we have other area available. Given the size of our airport, I do believe we have other areas that are available. Slide, please. Also wanted to point out FAA Circular 966B discusses regulations for, recommendations for airports without a control tower. Section 12.5.4 indicates when a drop zone has been established in airport, parachutes are expected to land within that drop zone. At airports that have not established drop zones, parachutists should avoid landing on runways, taxiways, aprons, and their associated surface areas. Let me be clear, we do have drop zones, but it does, in my mind, provide some indication that we don't want to encourage the drop zones or parachutes falling in these protected areas. Slide, please. So what are the options? The first option is to maintain the drop zones where they are. The section, the second option would be to move them to a different location on airport property. Some would argue that there is a third option to move the drop zones off of airport property. I don't believe that's appropriate to do. I also think that that would cause some problems with our grant assurances. So we've not put that on the table, but I do know some people have brought that up as an option. So I wanted to be able to address that. Slide, please. Here is a depiction of what we have as the current locations. So you can check out where the building is in the bottom part of that, as well as the three separated runway, the three separated drop zones. Slide, please. In looking at that first option, could we go back to the last slide? I apologize. Thank you. In looking at whether or not we needed to move these runways, I look at a few different things. First is the size. The second is the cost, and third is the operation and safety concerns. When we look at the size, these drop zones currently are the correct size and meet the minimum area requirements. When looking at cost, there would be no cost in moving them. The only cost is continued maintenance and opportunity costs that will be difficult at best to quantify. Where we do get into concerns are the operational concerns and safety concerns about maintaining the current locations. Regulations listed previously raised safety concerns for having runway so close to the runway area and in those protected zones when there are other areas that are in fact available. The current locations invite the crossing of runway by parachutists when they land in areas, certain drop zones that are on the other side of the runway, they are crossing on foot. That is a situation that is to be avoided, if at all possible, because of potential safety concerns. As plans are required to take steps to avoid conflicts between aircrafts and parachutists, these can be considered dependent operations and can create a situation where the runway is shut down for some period of time while there are parachutists in the air and can cause safety concern for other operators at the airport. If we decide we do want to move those, we did look at four different options for where we could possibly move them to. Next slide. The first option is the northeast corner of the airport, southeast side of the runway. I also looked at, in these options, the size, the cost, and the operation safety concerns. The number one concern here is that we would not have sufficient size to meet the safety needs and provide the separation for those drop zones in that area. That ruled the rest of the conversation here. The cost would be to maintain the area. Operations, it would place the drop zones in an area where it could be closer to a start skydiving facility and would not require crossing a runway, but the size and ability to differentiate the area made this unfeasible by staff's analysis. Option two, slide, please. Option two was next considered, the north side of the airport, north of the grass runway. Looking at size, this does provide sufficient safety size and availability for parachutists to land in an open area and provide the separation between drop zones that would be recommended. The cost would require infrastructure to allow vehicles to access that area, potentially through the road, requiring leaving airport property and coming back onto airport property. There's concerns about the proximity to the river, as well as the downtime as we have to get developed for it to be usable and how quickly we could get it up and running. Option three, slide, please. This was considered on the northwest side of the airport facility, north of the runway, south of west of the grass runway. Again, we looked at size, this is one of the largest available areas, does provide sufficient area and size to meet the drop zone needs, as well as the separation. The cost would be approximately $60,000, according to Public Works, to develop a gravel road grating and mowing and smoothing for it to be appropriately used as a drop zone. Looking from an operational concern, consensus was that this provided a place for drop zones in a safe area, farthest away from the runway object-free zone, farthest away from the river of the new options that we looked at, could be up and moving relatively quickly, and it discourages the crossing of runways on foot because of the distance to the runways. And then we looked at option four, slide, please. This involves putting a drop zone in the south area of the airport, south of the runway, but close to the airport aviation uses. It does involve the north part of Smith Park. This is sufficient to meet the safety needs, but we would have to be improved to make sure any hazards in the area defined are removed. There is cost of the hazard removal, there is additional cost of moving the soccer fields to the North Hook Drive property prior to use as a drop zone and the time that would take to get it up and running. Considering operations and safety, there is a large community concerned about using Smith Park, and I don't want to discount that community concern. We do need to look at it as its airport property. Operationally, this does provide the closest access to the runways without, I mean, to cross runway and create additional hazards. But it does have a community downside, which I don't think we should discount. When you look at airports and drop zone locations around the country, drop zones are located on and off airport property. Again, we did not look at options that were off airport property. I don't think it's operationally feasible, nor is it appropriate, given our grant recommendations. Slide, please. The recommendation of the staff, as well as concurring with Airport Commission, as well as Airport Manager Dikton, is to recommend moving drop zones to the north side of the airport into option three. We feel, and I believe it's a concurrence of the group opinion, that this provides the safest environment, it's away from the runways, it provides sufficient area so that we can set the drop zones and allow them plenty of room to land without involving airport operations. The cost and time that we can get this up and running is reasonable, given the nature of the events. I think it addresses the community needs that would otherwise be present in Smith Park. And this also allows us, the other airport areas we've mentioned, to pursue further development. So looking at all the options, we believe this is the safest and best recommendation moving forward. Again, moving, leaving the drop zones where they are would be a consideration, but for the regulations indicating we would need to look and see if we have other options available. Given that we have other safe options available, it's our belief that we would need to enact moving the drop zones to address the concerns of having them on the runway. This decision has been painted in social media and some of the members of the public about removing skydiving from the airport. It absolutely is not, in my mind, and nor has it ever been. This is a matter about utilizing the airport as an asset for the entire community and trying to develop it as an asset for this community. There is enough land in this asset to work with everyone to develop a community airport that provides recreational opportunities, retail opportunities, as well as educational and complex aviation opportunities. And with that, I believe that's all the information I have for this evening.
Okay, so are we moving forward with the, I guess I'm confused. Is something happening right now, Susan?
I would like, I would like to hear if there are any comments available from council or a desire to move forward on these, or if we require additional information. I'd like to hear input if I can.
Susan, I'll start. I'm comfortable with the recommendation for three. If we have the space out there, which we obviously do to meet the recommendations of the FAA, I think we should.
Okay. Any other comments?
I would second that. I mean, I think, again, I'm thinking long-term, and that area seems perfect for landing. I know it might add some other logistics, but I think we're thinking about everybody being able to use the airport. And I agree that that area three seems like the right space so that we can now build in other pieces over the next years and decades.
And I guess I'll echo some of those comments and say, you know, I tried to look at this and the recommendations in a way such that, you know, if, if start skydiving, if skydiving was first coming to Middletown, they were making, you know, this was the first time we were trying to determine where the drop zones should go, what would be the best recommendation? And I think that I just have to go with staff's recommendation that this is a space that can work. You know, is it the top choice for the user? Maybe not, but I would like to see us be able to all work together. You know, the city and the users at the airport to continue to provide a great fun opportunity for visitors from Middletown and continue to be a good partner. I just, I can't see why we shouldn't be able to move forward in that way. And, you know, like most things, if we make a decision and it's great and it works, then we'll be patting ourselves on the back and we'll say, look at all the great things that this decision was able to, you know, make possible. If it doesn't work, gosh, I guess we'll just have to go back to the drawing board again, but it won't be the first time that the city's had to do that, and I'm sure it certainly won't be the last. So with that being said, I say that, I say that we move forward and proceed and see what happens from there.
Are any additional comments? Okay. Thank you for that comments and that guidance. We'll go ahead and start moving that process forward. And I think that are all the comments I have for this evening, Your Honor.
Okay, the consent agenda is next. I just wanted to start before that by saying that I'm currently not employed by Start Skydiving and have no intentions for reemployment with them, but for public perception purposes at this time, I will abstain from voting on consent agenda items and be tonight and thus abstain from voting on the entirety of the consent agenda. So Ms. Skank, will you give us a roll call for the consent agenda?
So for your consideration this evening, we have to consider the authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with A&amp;A Safety Incorporated to proceed with the 2020 pavement marking program in an amount not to exceed $62,721.43 and to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with A&amp;A Safety Incorporated of Emilio Ohio for the rehabilitation of runway markings in the amount of $33,259.
So move for adoption, Moon.
Second, Mulligan.
Skank, please call the roll for us.
Mr. Mulligan.
Yes.
Mayor Condrey.
Abstain.
Ms. Vettori.
Yes.
Ms. Ninni.
Yes.
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Motion agenda, please.
To authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with J.K. Muir Corp. to proceed with the transit lot paving project in the amount of $139,332.90.
So move for adoption.
Ninni, second. Ms. Skank, please call the roll for us. Ms. Skank, please call the roll.
Mayor Condry?
Yes.
Ms. Vettori?
Nu'd Amy.
Yes.
Ms. Nanny?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mulligan?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Brettland, will you please present the legislation for tonight?
I will, thank you. There are four items of legislation on tonight's agenda, one of which is an emergency. We are asking for a motion to waive the charter provision requiring two separate readings as to ordinance number O-2020-22.
I move that the charter provision requiring two separate reading to be waived and that ordinance number O-2020-22 be declared an emergency and read one time only. Second.
Can you call roll on that? Sorry.
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Skank, we call the roll for that.
Ms. Vettori?
Yes.
Ms. Nanny?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mulligan?
Yes.
Mayor Condry?
No.
Resolution number R-2020-11, a resolution to make adjustments to appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Middletown, Counties of Butler and Warren, State of Ohio for the period ending December 31, 2020. This is the general fund here tonight for a second reading.
Do we have any comments from council on this? Okay, do we have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Skank, will you call the roll for us?
Ms. Nanny?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mulligan?
Yes.
Mayor Condry?
Yes.
Ms. Vettori?
Yes.
And Mayor, if you don't mind, I did have a question for staff. It's not so much a question as a comment on the deappropriations. I know last year we had brought back some, a partnership with the Y, and with everything going on with COVID, are we still going to be able to have the summer programming with the Y, or is that something that we're going to have to look at from deappropriation as well?
We still have the money appropriated. I actually have a phone call out to the Y through our Public Works Department who was coordinating that, to see if they are still going to be running it, given the concerns, and I have actually not heard back from them. Obviously, if they decide not to run those programs, we would capture that as savings.
So it's, we're kind of deferring to them on if they're going to run the program, obviously.
That was my plan.
Okay, thank you.
I would say, if we use it in that means, I would really like that money still to go to summer programming in some fashion. I'm just
Yeah, I agree. I think we'll probably, if anything, need a meals program, so if it stays in that same space to help kids over the summer.
I can certainly examine what some of the other options would be if they choose not to utilize it.
Great, Ms. Brettland, will you continue with the legislation item number two?
Yes. Ordinance number O-2020-20 and ordinance changing the zoning classification for parcel located at the intersection of Lefferson Road and Spring Grove Lane from B1 Neighborhood Business District to I1 Industrial Park District here tonight for a second reading.
Do we have any comments on this item?
This was the matter with the public hearing about at the last meeting.
Okay, do I have a motion to?
So move for adoption.
Second.
Ms. Skankley, please call the roll for us.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mulligan?
Yes.
Mayor Condry?
Yes.
Ms. Nanny?
Yes.
Ms. Vettori?
Yes.
Ordinance number O-2020-21 and ordinance amending the pay and benefits ordinances, ordinance number O-2019-83 and ordinance number O-2019-84 here for a second reading.
I have a comment about this. Susan, to clarify, yes or no, a line service technician must be willing and able to perform the duties of both focus areas, that would be customer service and aircraft service. That's correct?
There'd be, the job listing
Yes or no? Yes or no? We've gone back and forth on this one so many times, I just need an answer on this. I'm sorry. Do they have to, are they willing and able to perform the duties of both focus areas?
They have to be able to perform the duties that are asked of them, that could be either area. It's up to the airport manager to decide whether they would be the customer service focus or the airport service focus.
So they must be willing?
To perform the duties asked of them.
Okay. I'd like to make it noted for the record also about the change from exempt to non-exempt for the airport facility supervisor. I just want, for the record, for to say, the staff memo provided to council states that when staff was adding the new position to the table, it was also discovered that the airport facility supervisor was marked as exempt in error when the position is non-exempt. Just so everyone knows, that's why that's being changed on there. And also, it's my understanding from email communications of the city manager that there is a critical change to the staff memo that was not updated to council. The line service technician is a job title intended to replace both line service lead and customer service lead. Susan, can you confirm that?
Yes.
Okay, that would have been important for us to have updated, but now that council knows that, we can vote it appropriately. Do I have a motion to adopt? Or sorry, does anyone else have comments about that one? Okay, do I have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Skank, please call the roll.
Mr. Mulligan?
Yes.
Mayor Condry?
Yes.
Ms. Vettori?
Yes.
Ms. Nanny?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Ordinance number O-2020-22 and ordinance establishing a procedure for and authorizing an amendment of the contract with CBM Managed Services, now known as Summit Food Service for Jail Food Service, and declaring an emergency.
Does anyone have any comments on this?
Yes, Your Honor, this is a requested amendment on our jail food service contract. As it's noted in the staff report from Purchasing Agent Zimmerman, the 2017, the city took bids for contractor to provide services for serving food necessary for the jail inmates. They were awarded the contract as the only bidder. They have come to us and indicated that with our decreased population, they are having a difficult time operationally making this contract work for them financially, and have asked for a change in the payment so that they would pay a flat payment of $2,520 per week while the jail population is inmates or less, and we would pay the negotiated $2.40 a meal when the jail population is higher. This is never a change that staff likes to make, but we do feel like this is a change that we need to make to continue operations. There is a concern that without this, that someone will exercise their 90-day notice to cancel the contract, and as we have no other bidders, it could cause operational delays.
Ms. Cohen, do we, do we know the reason the population's so low? Is it COVID-19 related, or?
Yes.
Any other comments from council?
Have, have we ever dipped down into these numbers and non-COVID times?
Not to my knowledge, at least not this consistently.
I have some comments. It's going to take me a hot second to get them out, but I think that they're good. I know they're good. In the federal government, when I worked there, we humorously, but realistically, would use what we call the Washington Post test. So if we question the right answer to something, we would ask ourselves what would or could the headline on the Washington Post read? And while it's not a 100% answer, right, sometimes we make decisions that we know are not going to read greatest headlines, but we have to make them anyway. It is typically, though, a very good litmus test. So in my mind, the legislation item number four here does not pass the journal news test. The headline I read, and Adrick, you may put this much better than I would, but I would read, "City of Middletown prioritizes bailout of 2,500 employee Sioux Falls, South Dakota company over its own small businesses." That's the headline that I read after, after seeing this item. I don't fault some of food service for asking, and I'm grateful for the services that they do provide our city. The reality is that all companies and cities are suffering right now, and the federal government has shelled out exorbitant amounts of money to assist, and it's not the City of Middletown's duty to pay this company in order for them to break even because their contract model did not account for possible decline in inmates. I asked our city manager for the original contract, which council should automatically receive, in my opinion. If we're going to be asked to approve an amendment, we should get the original contract attached, which Susan provided that to me very quickly upon request. The contract never specified that what we must retain, maintain a certain number of inmates, so if our arrests were down, they wouldn't get the funding, right? So that's a business model choice on their behalf. Oh wait, but a company would never think that Middletown would have a decline in its inmate population because, well, it's Middletown, right? You know, I'm tired of Middletown putting itself down. I am tired. I think that Middletown puts itself second to a lot of other cities, a lot of other entities, and I think it's time that we take a stance and pride in our city. And I mean, you know, I feel like in our city manager search as well, I want to make sure that Middletown is the top on our city manager's list. It's important to me. We deserve to be second to no one, and we deserve to stand our ground in what we believe in. In this case, I believe in the sanctity of city funds for other uses. I'm not opposed to alternatives, and that brings me to another topic. I would really like to see our staff empowered to come up with real alternatives on these staff memos. If you look at the legislation for tonight in the past few council meetings, here are the alternatives that were presented, some of them. The alternative would be to not deappropriate the funds, maintain current pay and benefits. None. The alternative is not to purchase the new roller. None. Again, the city council could choose not to approve the agreement. These are simply acknowledging that we can approve or disapprove of the item. For legislation item number four, at least five alternatives came to my mind immediately when I read it, and I'll read them out to you. So one, do not approve this contract amendment but offer alterations when the contract is up in December for the three one-year extensions. Two, do not approve this contract amendment at all, which is listed as the alternative, though for it to be a true alternative, we recognize the contractor could exercise its 90-day notice, but then what? Do we have alternate vendors that we know could perform the service? I understand there was only one bidder that was three years ago. Three years ago, there was one bidder. Has the industry changed since then? I would like to hear this alternative thought through to the end by the staff who know the topic best. Third, approve with alterations. Maybe we pay a flat rate equivalent to 25 inmates or more. Four, approve with alterations. Maybe we play a fat, play, pay a flat rate equivalent to X number of inmates or more, and the city receives the overage food that we can donate to those in need. I really do not approve the city just paying a company extra money and not receiving a product. Five, approve with alterations. Only approve this contract amendment moving forward, not making it retroactive. We all have highly qualified staff in the city with many years of experience, and I really value all of their input. I would love to hear their thoughts and alternatives on what is presented, and I want to empower them to feel they truly have a voice. So about this specific legislation item, I'm not opposed to alternatives to it, but I do not support it as is. Thank you for hearing that on that one. Okay, do we have any other comments before we put this to bed?
I mean, I think those were some good thoughts. Do we have kind of the time and flexibility, Susan, to do some research? I just wouldn't want to get us into a pickle where we have no food. So, I mean, I think the mayor had a couple of good ideas, and do we have the time to look into those?
The company has asked for this additional payment now. Now, I will tell you with that, you know, I always think there's time. If you'd like to table it for two weeks and look at other alternatives, we'll tell them that's what the, you know, that's what's going to happen. If we need to look at other alternatives, I'm happy to look at those as well, you know, and if we want to wait two weeks, that's what we'll do.
I'd be fine with waiting to gather some additional data.
Okay.
I agree. I think that it's prudent for us, certainly, given Mayor Condry's couple of alternatives that she came up with, that staff should be able to come up with a few alternatives for us.
Do you want us to come back and present whatever staff recommends as a creative alternative, or would you like us to look at a particular alternative?
Um, I mean, I think that they've got those examples to work from, and they have the ability to come up with their best alternative to, you know, to just go ahead and signing off on the additional amount. I'd like to see, I'd like to see what that would be.
Okay. Does there anyone else have any indications of what they'd like to see in two weeks? Just to make sure I'm getting you exactly what you need.
I defer to the people who know it best, so the staff absolutely have other thoughts that might be better for them. I mean, ultimately, they're the ones who are going to have to deal with the contract in place.
Okay. Thank you. We'll table it, and I'll bring it back to you in two weeks.
Thank you. Okay, with that, do we have any outlying comments for the meeting? Okay, our next officially scheduled meeting as of right now would be the 19 May regularly scheduled council meeting. Maybe we'll even have it at council chambers for once. That would be nice. It's, it'll be at 17:30. Until then, I wish you all blue skies over Middletown.
Thank you.
Thank you.